But sewer work will be paid for if that bill passed. If it ever gets proposed and passed. That means the bill will be paid by all taxpayers, including the Western End, that will never see sewers.
But it's going to provide clean water for all residents? It's going to provide clean water for all residents, right?
The sewer project is to protect our water, Lake Tylo, Hall Leonard Road, all the ground, and the Potucks River, in no hazard. And again, it's not an exact, you know, science, but I tell you, it's a work in progress. Most of Coventry and not seored were very small percentage of the town sewers.
Or how much?
And I don't have the answer. I'm not going to answer something I don't know.
Is it less than 10%?
Basically, I don't have the answer. And again, I just wanted, you asked me about the proposal on the state general reps. I didn't ask for them to come up with that idea. They took kind of, somebody must've.
The residents actually asked for it.
All right, well, in other words, if you look into it and it'll be discussed later on, it's not a good idea. And I didn't want to call all.
But it's not a call for me to spend 50 grand on a sewer line?
I didn't call all eight reps, two senators and six reps, although when I see them next, I'll let them know. But thanks for that question. Any other one?
I do, I do.
All right, again, I have two minutes.
Everybody on the town council, were you guys aware that one of the loans for 730,000 used the town hall annex building? Was everybody aware?
That was voted unanimously by the town council. It was done because we could not go through the infrastructure bank and we had to put the dry line.
Put the sewer fund that money, right?
Let me finish, please.
Sure.
We had to put the dry line in on the road. It was going to be cost effective, so we would not have to tear the road up. So it was voted on by the town council on a unanimous decision. It was brought to our attention that was going to happen. It's not like the town is going to rename. We did not go through infrastructure to, uh, to, uh, infrastructure bank for that particular loan.
But why not use the sewer fund?
We were well aware that that's why we did it, was put the line in on the road at the time where the road construction.
But why not use the sewer fund?
Just public comment. All right, thank you.
One last thing. So is the town 29 million dollars in debt right now over this sewer project that has less than 10% of the residents attached?
Again, I don't have that answer, but thanks for your question.
Is it the town manager?
Monday night, you can ask these questions if the town has the answers. Go ahead. We're not going to make this a political football. What we're doing is public comment. Monday has been set by the directors to handle the questions on the professional level. All right, instead of like who guessed and what? Go ahead. Name and address, please.
My name is Janice Stenson. I live at 670 Nadiopra. So Mr. McGee, do you believe that every contractor that can tell you you can do something cheaper? Do you believe them all?
I'm sorry?
Do you believe every contractor that comes to you and says, oh, I did this. I can do it cheaper. I did cheaper for you. Do you normally believe them?
You know, they put out this job, put out a bid, so I don't, no, I don't answer questions. I don't believe.
But you were okay with that. Mr. Waters, do you, did you accept the position of town manager that requires you follow the rules, such as enforcing that change orders are done or presented before the town council? Did you do that knowing, such as enforcing that they go before the town council with the intention to disregard those procedures that were put in place to protect the townspeople?
Okay, thank you for your question.
No, I'm not done. My two minutes are not done. I'm allowed to continue.
I'll decide that, but I'll give you another minute.
Regardless, regardless of what the outcome in this particular situation after the fact is not being transparent, procedures were put in place for a reason. If any of you feel as though you cannot abide by those parameters that you were elected or hired into, then maybe you should reconsider being here in this position. To be, to let you start from here. The sewer subcommittee, that is an advisory committee to the town council, is it not? In so being, why are there not minutes posted for those meetings as well? As long as they're an advisory committee to this town council, those meeting minutes must be posted and available to the townspeople per the Open Meetings Act. So every single one of those meetings and every single one of those advisements from that committee to this town council would have to be looked at as being null and void, any of those decisions, because they were not properly recorded, as per the Open Meetings Act.
Okay, thank you.
So now we had a rule we go into the Attorney General.
Eric Wilson, 48 Hazard Street. Let's refer to the 13th September SOR County Meeting on 13th September.
All right, uh, excuse me, one second. Please, quiet. We're trying to listen to one individual talking at a time.
Is this counting into my two minutes?
Excuse me? You're at two, we'll give you two more. Go ahead.
All right, so awesome statements from the town members of the SOR committee. Gentleman right there told me that these Hazard Street residents were begging for sewers. Yet, once this project started and the ground broke, a petition was signed by every single resident to stop it. How does that add up? On top of that, Kerry McGee, sitting right there in that seat, and I was standing right here on September 13th, he looked me in the eyes and told me that this project would increase the value of my home. Is that true?
No way. Thank you for your question.
On top of that, what else was the point I was going to make? Oh, also, uh, so when someone buys a house, they might include three bedrooms, fireplace, more tax, and that is not on top, because now we have to pay sewer tax on top of fire tax, on top of property tax, on top of vehicle tax, or something I privately own. Let's continue. Brady Sullivan, he's the owner of the Anthony Mills. Looks very lovely. He can receive nearly a 93% discount off of his initial assessment. I was told it was from 990,000 to 66,000. I was told by the town manager, Grandma Waters, that it was to entice the developer to redevelop a blighted property. So was he informed of this assessment fee before he bought the property? Because we sure weren't. On top of that.
Another minute, because we have a.
The term blighted was used, and that's a very subjective term. Right now, I consider with the work I've done on my house, when I bought it, it was blighted. So what is my discount going to be? 93% off my initial assessment? Because I think it should be, because I've done a lot of work.
And let's continue. Okay, thank you.
Christine Holmes, 18th Avenue Court. I have one other question, and it has, actually pertains to the last meeting, when they were saying that the ground on Coventry Drive, the soil was good and everything, but it had to do with a high water table. At that time, I was actually going, I'm in the midst of going through it. My mother lives on Black Rock Road, while her house is on Black Rock Road, which we're selling. The house had to get a new septic system, which, by the way, there's no sewers going in over there. It's ledge, it's swamp, it's a high water table. We also did radon mitigation in there, very high water table. They don't need it. Why do we need it in areas that are not with ledge and poor soil and everything else? It doesn't make any sense how you guys can just pick and choose who's going to pay what out of their pockets. I have a special needs son. I have an 83-year-old mother who has cancer and health problems, living with me. I just lost my job because my place is closing its doors, and now I'm slammed with this. But I won't qualify for any grant or anything else, because my husband makes too much money. But hey, I love my house, I'll give it back.
Thank you. Next, hi there. Name and address, better record.
Jared Nunes, 52 Village Street.
Good evening, rep.
Mr. President, members of the council. I know you guys have been in receipt.
Yeah, if you can talk to them.
I know you guys were in receipt of the letter that myself, as well as the rest of legislators, sent to you.
I got it. I got an email, I think.
Oh, you got an email?
I didn't get one.
I take a little bit of offense at the fact that you're calling it a bad idea, because.
That's my personal opinion.
I appreciate your opinion, Mr. President, I do. But I have constituents, the same as all of you do, and I have immense respect for all of you. I've never disparaged any of you. I've never, you know, this, this is a problem that was created in part due, in my opinion, in part due to poor notice to the residents of the streets that are affected. All right, this could have been prevented back in 2016 if proper notice was sent to the people that were going to be specifically affected by this, that they were going to be saddled with this type of an expense. All right, so.
Well, I think it's been admitted that it wasn't sent out as correctly as it should.
Right, so I, I did not, all I wanted to make clear, Mr. President, is that I did not create this problem. The draft legislation that you guys were provided with is our attempt at fixing it, and it's not too much different than attempts that have been made in other cities and towns that have passed. Okay? And you made a comment that everybody in town would pay for that, would be paying the cost of completing those contracts. And yes, that is correct. Everybody in town would pay the cost of completing the contract until the people tied in at their choice, at the time that the people tied into the sewers, then they would pay the assessment at that point in time. So it's not a particularly bad idea. I think it's actually fair for the people that live on the streets that, you've probably been getting the same phone calls that I have, as well as Mr. McGee, as well as Mr. LaBosnier and all of us, the people that are going to be, that don't have the income to pay those bills. And, you know, you guys can talk about loan programs all you want, but you still have to pay the money back. All right? The people don't have, we live in one of the highest taxed communities in the state. All right, people have no more money left. At some point in time, enough is enough. They weren't notified properly. At some point in time, you're going to, you're going to know when to cut your losses, take a step back, and listen to what the people are telling you to do.
Thank you.
All right. You're going to need to come up with creative solutions to do that, and you can't just look at the people and say, whoa, we got to continue now. All right, there's got to be a creative, maybe you can renegotiate your contract with West Warwick Sewer. Maybe you can renegotiate some of the other terms of some of your financing.
All right, again, we're not supposed to respond. Public comment, you had your public comment. I have other responses some other time.
You could respond to my email, too.
Rep. Nunes, how are you, sir? You know, I heard you on the radio. I heard the 2012 problem that you had in Warwick, okay? In 2015, we put an amendment forward. Every single representative had voted on it, you included. You seconded the motion at the General Assembly, the Enabling Act over here. You didn't have a problem with it then, and nobody else did either. No concerns. Most of us weren't on the council in 2012, when you were voting on these, the issue for Warwick, the problem with Warwick. You weren't voting on it. Senator Rob Tackus was there. He's the one that initiated this back in 2006. This is not, this is not a new legislation. This has been on the General Assembly, it's been in there since 1997. So don't, you know, I mean, you're making it sound like it's our council that is doing this.
It was the wisdom of Mr. McGee to stop this thing eight years ago. He stopped it and put a moratorium on it. All you have to do is put it back. Clearly, nobody wants it. Look at the room.
There's a town council, okay? Plain and simple, we made a decision as a council. You have your name on it, and all our legislators do.
I am not disparaging. This is your name. You made the decision at the time.
See, we're being a town in this room.
You have the ability to reverse the decision. You have the ability to make it right. Every single one of you has the ability to make this right.
You have the ability to do the right thing.
Sewer, sewer committee and the town council, not a state issue. Thank you for your, let's go on with a couple more speakers.
I had the same constituent say.
Thank you. You've had your time.
Your name's on it.
You've had the time. Thank you. I'll talk to you another time.
Do the right thing.
Go ahead. Don't worry about me doing the right thing. The problem is, you have the state, the state senate.
Thank you. Good evening. We have Senator Tackus, 28th Avenue, Snake Hill Road. I just want to ask the council that next week at the high school, I've noticed that only the town manager is going to be fielding questions. Is the whole council going to be fielding questions and representing?
No.
Why not? Why not? And I think that that's the proper way. This is a very contested and emotional issue, a financial issue, and I think that the council should be there to answer questions. I mean, you just said for the last hour, they're going to be there to answer questions. I'm sure very much that the town manager can answer every single question, but this is a very important topic. And I believe that the whole council that represents this whole community from every district, since it's going to affect everybody, every taxpayer in this community, that you should all be there with the town solicitor to answer the questions. I mean, you are probably having this venue too small, but there's probably going to be a lot more constituents and residents that are affected. I also walked over the weekend, Hazard Street, and also Coventry Drive, and Ada, and Nortry Court, and I was puzzled to look at the map of why these streets were also chosen. That's one, another question I have for you. Why do we pick and choose questions? And I think also we should involve other agencies. I think that the other question is, why are we pursuing these streets? Is it a requirement by DEM? Is the state forcing the town to have sewers? I did speak to DEM, and I'm going to invite the Department of Environmental Management to be at that meeting, so if there's any questions from the audience, there's still need to be there. And lastly, any piece of legislation that you folks want us to pass in the General Assembly, you request it through a resolution. So I'm not sure, Councilor LaBosnier, if those little pieces of legislation that you just showed, were those bills that came from this body, from your body, that you requested, that we enabled, that we passed up behalf of the town of Coventry? That was your request? You passed a resolution?
But if the concerns, if there are concerns, if there were no concerns about it then, all of a sudden we have concerns when the information was there that it previously happened in another city?
Well, there's a big difference, there's a big difference with.
It's not what was described.
$6,000, 1,900 hours in Lincoln. It depends. I think that this whole issue has to be timed out. We better slow down, and we better stop.
Again, if I could interrupt, I know you've got the two minutes, Senator. I understand, I respect your position. Let me tell you, all right, several things, again, we said, and we're not supposed to respond, because other people want to talk.
I'm not going to respond to that, Mr. President.
The reason being, we don't want to make it be a political football.
We don't have a lot of time, but some.
The town council, whoever the town council has been over the last 40 years, has a job to look in and to protect areas that are vulnerable, cesspools, septic tanks, DEM would like that, we have to give plans in. These areas are not random. You probably missed the last meeting when Mr. Nichols made that presentation. I don't know if you were here, but he explained it verbatim why these streets were picked accurately. It's a very small minority of streets in Coventry. There's professional architect, we have professional town manager, professional DPW director, professional engineer to professionally decide if the streets need to be done. All right, it has to be paid for. Again, it could be real easy. Coventry's on it, no sewers. We're sewer-free zone. You can pollute all the Lake Tylo, pollute Pockets of River, and, you know, take credit for it. I personally am going to do the right thing as a council person. But thanks, we have other people behind you, Senator.
I went to hit a DEM, but.
Thanks, Senator, thank you. Kind of hurt enough. Name and address, sir?
Eric Scholes, 30 West Shore Drive. I want to talk about something that we haven't talked about tonight, and that is the medical implications of this sewer project. Because ever since the last meeting when I was here, I can't stop thinking about it. The expense to me is going to be crippling. I think about it every night before I go to bed. I think about it every morning when I wake up. I drive into work, it's the only thing I can think about. It's stressing me out. It's ruining my life. Part of it is that I just have no idea where I'm going to come up with the money to pay for this.
Okay, I understand. And next week, hopefully you'll come up with the answers. Hopefully you'll have some answers. We're not going to ever have all the answers. It's not necessarily a popularity vote. Sewers are not optional. Yes. Hi, rep. Name and address, not that we don't know.
Patricia A. Serpa, 194.
Welcome.
Thank you. 194 Kimberly Lane, West Warwick. I represent District 27, part of Coventry. And I'm approaching you respectfully tonight, Mr. President, with a suggestion for Mr. Waters, perhaps. I've been sitting here for two hours, and it's pretty clear that you don't have most of the answers to most of the questions, which would not be expected to. So just, I'm throwing this out there, if you made your email public, and people that have access to social media, they have answered their neighbors, if they could submit their questions via email to you on October 16th, because my fear is that that meeting will turn into another, I don't know, we'll have to get back to you. So if they have your questions at that time, there'll be less of that. And I'm just going to.
Rep., not to interrupt, but I think I said that initially for people, right, tonight. I began it that way. Send the emails to Mr. Waters, any questions in preparation thereof. Good comment, glad you made it.
And then, secondly, you folks did make a major policy decision, so I have to echo what my colleague, Senator Tackus, said. This is a major policy decision, and I think your presence on the 16th is critical. And the last thing I'm going to say is, I know that some of you don't like it when the state reps and the state senators get followed, but I will say that these people call us when they don't get reactions from some of you, and I mean that.
Yeah, I entertain, again, I think, second or third time, and we want to make sure everybody that wants a comment tonight, public comment, has time.
I just want to make sure nobody was misled. So the comment was made that there's no way that this sewer assessment can come close to $50,000. I'm a finance guy, and I'll prove it. So on the road, the calculation would be 115 gallons per day times, if you had a four-bedroom home on Ono Road, it would be 115 times four, that would be 460 gallons. And your finance director can confirm the amount per gallon is $64. So that comes up to $29,440. Now, the town is being very gracious to give us a 20-year, 6% note. Now, if you add that interest in, the interest alone is $21,180. So if you total up the principal of 29,440, plus the interest of 21,180, that comes to $50,620. And when I flush my toilet, if I lived on Ono Road, I still wouldn't even be connected, because then I have to pay another $5,000 to $7,000 to connect, and then I also have to pay to pee in perpetuity. That is insane to me, incomprehensible, and not affordable. It's not cost-effective.
Go right ahead. Name and address.
My name is Janice Stenson, again, at 670 Nadiopra.
Thank you.
So, excuse me?
I said, thank you.
No, what was the under comment?
Just continuing. Take it, just go with the comments.
Nobody wants?
Go right ahead.
I did hear. So to follow up on what Mr. Serpa was just saying, as far as emails, contact information. Now, earlier, I don't remember exactly which one, but it was you, Serpa, and it's a, that's me. Don't shake your head.
No, I said it might be. I don't know what you're talking about.
That you didn't receive a letter that was sent to all of you. So you didn't see, receive something by mail? You didn't receive anything by email?
I did.
So what is the proper way of contacting you all? Because I know, I've contacted my district representative, and he hasn't responded to me.
I did state I had received an email.
Basically, he has spoken to me, he's only spoken down to me, but that's besides.
Well, in my defense, I have not received anything from you, and I don't know.
Oh, yes, you have. I have a confirmation that it was received.
I have, I have not, and I'll.
So if we can't provide contact information.
And if I did receive something and not, I would, I would respond to you.
Obviously, that's not true.
I respond to everybody.
No, you haven't.
Everybody.
You have not. You have not. So the contact information, no, I'm not done. My two minutes are not done. The contact information that is on the town website, is that not correct for each and every single one of you? Those are our methods of contacting you. If you do not respond to your constituents, then you are not doing your job.
That's right.
Good evening. John Assel, 16 Veronica Court. Look at the cast aspersions on the sewer committee and the council. I think everybody in here is involved with great integrity, there's no shenanigans going on, but I think there's a big problem. And I'd like to offer something for next Monday that'd be looked, that's looked at, because I have a problem historically with experts. The experts 50 years ago said the sewer line couldn't go to West Warwick by gravity. I'm sorry, by.
Force main.
Force main. Those are the experts, the sewer line went through. The experts said Coventry could never use a pumping station on Sandy Bottom Road. Guess what you have? A pumping station. As a simple contractor, I get involved with experts, but, you know, I have to be as cost effective as I can be. So my last project is force main. And I'm just suggesting maybe that, besides interest abatements and longevity of loans that could help some people, that's really going to be serious trouble now, not by any plans of anybody, but my suggestion is, you look at those heavy ledge areas that are so expensive, and imagine you have to work it out with a contractor. You have to go down four feet for a force main. It's, it's mind-boggling to go down, what, 6, 12, 14, 18 feet and bust through ledge? That's magic. So maybe look at that with some, with some pump stations in four feet. And as far as the experts saying that a four-bedroom home uses this much water, or a three-bedroom, that's, that is so bogus, it is so ridiculous, when you do it, it doesn't happen. This is pie in the sky with DEM. But there's reasons behind that also. So the water usage, that if that's how part of the fees are based, I'm sorry, a lot of them are bogus, and I know you haven't created them, so I would just ask that you look at force main for the area of the ledge, and I think you're going to be looking at saving several hundred thousand of dollars. That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck.
Good evening. Kevin Snow, 36 Edward Street. I just have one question. You said a few moments ago that you want to do, just do the right thing. Why, if you want to do, if you really want to do the right thing, then why wouldn't the town listen to its residents, who clearly don't want this?
That's right.
And for it, and even for it, it seems a little shady, and I'm not staying on, and I don't know what the process was to notify everybody, but it certainly wasn't done right, which you have acknowledged. But no, it's clear that nobody, well, a great percentage of us do not want it, and it's being forced on it. If you want to do the right thing, then why don't you listen to the residents? That's all I can say.
Good afternoon. Dr. Benjamin, 30 Cecil Avenue. I live on top of McCott Boulevard. There's a lot of ledge. And my concern is, we voted this down so many times, all day referendums, at least two or three times years ago. Now, since AMJ put the sewer line and opened the area with all kinds of, let's put one here, let's put one there. No, I go and, I go talk to the town manager, and I ask him, not just him, if you got, if I don't remember. I said, how come we voted down, and here it is coming into our area? He says, because we didn't use the taxpayers' money, we took a bond out. Oh, duh, who's going to pay the bond? I'd like to know. Now, on side of that, I've got ledge coming up, right, we're digging through ledge, okay. Now, water hasn't been mentioned yet. These ledges have veins in them. You're going to stop messing around, we're going to give water, some of us may get water, may not, I don't know. may not, I don't know. But if I'm paying to have the leach, to have the sewer go through my property, and I'm paying the usage, and I'm paying, if I get water, what am I going to do then? I got to have French drains put in, correct? Yeah, I do. Then I got to put a pump in there. That's the worst scenario. But it's concerned to me, I'm 74 years old, you know what? I'm tired. I can't keep bringing up money. I can't make money no more, okay? I'm here because I'm healthy. There's a lot of people, there's, you know, soft stories you guys heard a lot, I don't have to keep going on with it. But I got people in my neighborhood around Lock, is they can't come yet, so I'm talking for them. And as far as you, Mr. McGee, I'm disappointed in you. You know why? I'm booing you. And you made a statement, you're helping with this stuff, that we knew it was going to affect people, we knew it was going to cause hardship, then why didn't you vote for it? That's, that's-
I have 1448 Hazle Street, this is my last time. Subs a river pollution? You're claiming that Hazle Street, for instance, is polluting it?
I'm not claiming it.
Well, it's being claimed, yet there's no proof. The amount of ledge that those machines cannot get through, and they're hammering away, and you're saying that the dye-free dish soap that I use, that goes down my drains, is penetrating through all that ledge, and entering that river and killing fish? Rose Technologies is a pharmaceutical company, I interviewed there for a security job. They do tests. One of the parts of the job was, if this is bubbling, or fizzing, or emitting some sort of gas or color, you called the car next to it to let the person know, "Hey, you're poisoning the world." They are on the Patuxent River, potentially, or let me recommend, how about you look into Rose Technologies instead of the people up on Hazle Street when it comes to polluting the Patuxent River? Maybe other factors. Honestly, when you go to this, ethics.roide Island.gov, it's a website, government website, if you refer to 8 August, the minutes of the open session of the Rhode Island Ethics Commission, under actions taken in executive session, voted unanimously eight to zero, initially determined that the facts alleged, and regarding Brigory La Bastien, apologize, forgot your name wrong, complaint number 2017-6, if true, are sufficient to constitute a knowing and lawful violation of the Code of Ethics and authorized an investigation. That is August 8th of this year, and you are making financial decisions for us, and you also are responding to a lot of these people here with a lot of criticism and a lot of harshness in your voice. How do you respond to this?
I was speaking with, with the rep. Okay, again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My apologies, I tend to get a little, you know, I tend to do a little, not disrespectful, not disrespectful. I've been too-
You've had your chance a couple times. All right, go ahead, sir.
Chris Holstrom, Borbridge Wood Trail. This question, I don't expect an answer tonight, because I, A, you don't have to, and B, honestly, I, I can do a follow-up on the future sessions, it'd be fantastic. My questions are really for the Town Councilman DeGarm. A couple of things that came up tonight, and I just wanted to get some clarifications as to the legislative authority. One of the things that happened in the beginning, where Mr. McGee had made a statement saying that a recall petition would only be valid if there was something to be found that was illegal or immoral in character, is that, am I quoting you right on that, saying that the recall ballot would not be allowed if it was not something that was tied to an illegal or immoral nature?
That's why they usually are done, and it's not legal.
Okay, so maybe that's not a question then, because I thought he was saying it had to be, and I just wanted to be clear that I didn't see that anywhere in the town charter that that was required. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear on matter of law.
Can I share something?
Yes, please.
Can I clear one thing up? I am not a town councilman.
Oh, sorry, solicitor. Town someone.
I'm a town solicitor, thank you.
Thank you.
But so my, in my second statement with regard to a matter of law, is you had mentioned that the town manager had the executive authority to act and make decisions such as the change order that was originally approved by the town council. The change order was not, however, approved by the town council. And my only question to you is, you had mentioned that the town manager has that authority, I did, I see that nowhere in our home rule charter, and I was hoping that you could clarify as to what passage within our charter he has such authority. So that was just, again, I don't expect an answer tonight, if you know it off the top, be ahead, fantastic, but if not, if we can, you know, can be on that later date. Couple of other things that kind of drew my attention, and only because I happened to be listening while I'm here. The annex building being used as collateral on the note, where is that allowed? I'm pretty sure that any type of borrowings from the town has to go through a bond referendum, and not using taxpayer-held assets or town-held assets for collateral on future notes, bypassing any type of referendum vote. So I guess I'm kind of concerned of where's the legal authority to make that happen? And then my follow-up question to that is, if you're making these, these folks have, you know, where they can borrow, to, in order to pay this over time at a, at a interest rate that's over and above what the interest rate the town is paying, even if you can get that rate down to the, to the same, at what point did the town become a financial institution in, in the business of lending?
Right.
If it's not actually, if it's not being required and be within the limits of the town charter, is to act as a banking institution to a citizen. So again, if, if we don't have the answers tonight, man, don't expect you would, but I would like to, you know, I'll see you next month, if we can talk about it then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker.
Any repeats, like, add to the holdoff. Go ahead.
Hi, George LaMastro, 751 Washington Street.
I'm sorry, I'm, believe it or not, I could not hear you, you're pretty, got good volume, it's just too much talking. Go ahead, your name and address again, please?
George LaMastro.
Thank you.
751 Washington Street.
Thank you, sir.
I have a few questions, I don't want any answers right now, but if you could jot them down, come up later on.
That's why we're hearing them.
One would be, we're all on the same boat here, so let's, you know-
We are not.
We are. I believe red, too. I believe those solar panels, usually the systems that are put in, the inverters, are insured by the companies that install them for next number of years. Take a peek into that, see if they're still responsible for it, and then you don't have to pay a dime. You're welcome. Okay. So the, the second thing is, is we live on a glacial moraine, so theoretically, for the most part, our septic systems just don't go bad. Not for a long, long time. And even if they did, if you take a community like Bonnet Shores, then they engineer them individually, and they have it put above ground, and that's really close to the water. Listen, I'm more of a tree hugger than most of you probably, so trust me when I say that. So my thoughts are, perhaps you got into it, and, and I'm not pointing fingers, you know, we, we all want it, what's best for everybody, but perhaps we got into this, and, you know, you're in for 10%, but it sounds like the 90 other percent doesn't really want it. Now, hold on, you're already into it for that 10%. So if we get into it later on, by the time you get to those other percentages, those people could be theoretically paying a heck of a lot more than even these people are. They should know that. So, maybe we could do a little vote, where everybody in the community, the whole town, just, an added tax for one year, an extra whatever it comes to, to pay off the whole mess, so that they don't have to pay $50,000 of three years. Like I said, we're all the same boat, and that'll take care of it. And then wash our hands of it, a couple engineers might lose their jobs, but that's probably why they're telling us what they, what they tell us anyway. So, okay?
Thank you.
President, my name is John Schalbeil, 14 Sherri Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island, getting a couple of things. You're running the town council meeting, the meeting is still open, hasn't closed. You can always redirect back to new business, and I would ask that you make a motion that all town councilors be present Monday night. I think it's, it's on you, you represent the whole town, we go through you for our wants and our needs, and I think that's certainly a position that you should take before this council meeting closes. I had a house on Choppin Street, right off of Hazle Street, I sold it last July. My concern is, that whole hill is all ledge, and a lot of those houses are 100-plus years old. You have ledge issues. And ledge conformance today is all, is a lot of time, a lot of money for homeowners. And I just can't imagine, you know, in the modernized circumstances that might be taking place now with all those homes. And it all adds up to more money for people down the road who want to sell a house or buy a house, and conform to the standards that we all have to uphold to. But with that, that's all I have, and I'd really like to see you make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Joe Reed, Reed Avenue. Now, I'd just like to make a mention of something that was said earlier by Chris, that there is a petition going around for District 3, and I would encourage anyone here who does live in District 3 to meet Mr. LeBlanc outside to sign that. And perhaps if anyone here wants to sponsor a similar one for Districts 2 and 4, that I wouldn't see as being much of a problem to get the signatures you'd need. Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Sherri Elderkin, 979 Victory Highway, Green. I may not see sewers, but I may see taxes from the sewers. I don't have a choice whether or not I see those taxes. I don't think it's fair that we are pushing these sewers down everyone's throats. They should have a choice to hook up if they choose. It shouldn't be forced. I've been to numerous town council meetings, I'm not shy, I speak what I think. I am going to tell you something, you shouldn't be ashamed of yourselves. You are hired to represent the taxpayers. You are hired to do a job, to do what is in their best interest. Time and time again, I've sat in these meetings, and I've listened to people say, "But you're not hearing us." You're not. You didn't hear us on the wind turbine, you didn't hear us on the 1 megawatt solar farms we're putting in, and you're sure as hell not listening to these people about the sewers. You really need to reassess your jobs and do what you're being hired to do. Support your citizens.
Thank you.
Sherri Roberts, 2270 Trail, West Greenwich. And I just want to say, with all due respect, I know every one of you, I have respect for every one of you, I'm just hoping that with the letter that you have received from the legislators, that you'd be willing to at least just try and work on this to make it fair for the people, because we really, really, this is really affecting some people. I was out there talking in my district, and it's heartbreaking to see what some of these people are going through. We really need to hear them, and please, let's try and work with them. I, I have to tell you that no matter what, I, I'm going to have their backs, I'm going to do whatever it takes so that they are happy, and I'm hoping that this will get resolved before January gets here, because I will have to work with the remainder of the Coventry delegation to try and do something to help these people, but I, I certainly hope that. I know that you all, you all can be reasonable, I'm hoping that you can handle this pretty much on your own and get it resolved among yourselves.
Thank you.
Kristen Holmes, 188 Accord. Am I boring you? Because you just keep putting your head down, smirking, making me go back to the back. The first time up there, I had about 30 seconds.
There's going to be a question and answer on Monday. This was just a general public comment.
It is general public.
And it is your third, fourth time up, but go ahead. I'm not bored.
I have one last question to ask.
Go ahead, ask away.
Is how do you guys determine how I spend anywhere from $15,000 to $50,000 of my hard-earned money? Because if that's the case, why don't a group of us to get together and tell each of you how to spend that kind of money?
Right.
Now, don't leave me alone to bang your head like you've been all day with your smirk.
Right, thank you. Yes.
My name is Janice Stenson, 670 Nadiyoke Road. As all public bodies, I require to maintain written minutes for all open and closed meetings per Rhode Island General Law Statute 42-46-8, Section A. And these minutes must include the date, time, and place of the meetings, the members of their public body recorded, as they're present or absent, a record of individual members, of any vote taken, and any other information relevant to the business of the public body, which all this is, and any information that a member of the public body requests to be included. So, that comment earlier, when I came up last time, where someone was questioning whether I'm a miss or a misses, has no bearing on any conversation in this town council meeting. Never should have that, that ever been spoken, and I'm not the only one who heard it, and I want to make sure it's on record.
Thank you.
Louis Veras, 49 Reed Avenue. I just want to say, my house is assessed at $142,000. If you put sewers and make me pay, it's going to cost me between $20,000 and $35,000. I have been trying to talk my husband into moving, and he didn't want to hear it. He heard all this, "We want to move." I am not going to pay that money to you, you're not going to get it from us. I am disabled, and I cannot pay that money. And as far as this council is concerned, these two ladies have more integrity and care about the people more than the rest of you.
That's right.
James LeBlanc, 43 Hazle Street. I've been told, and maybe if you decide to answer, that a, an investigation into the sewer fund has been requested. Can you tell me why it has been denied?
Good question.
Thank you for your question.
You have Monday's meeting.
New business.
I'd like to make a motion to add that the council and the sewer subcommittee be at the meeting on Monday.
And that's not grandstanding. That's because I think we need to be there.
It is, we are grandstanding for the taxpayers.
I did already.
It was already seconded. You need to listen to the women.
Get it right.
It's a consensus.
Motion on the floor.
In the microphone, please.
And sewer subcommittee. Sewer subcommittee, and the full council, and the whole sewer subcommittee.
So the, the primary concern whenever a public body meets is to make sure that the notice is proper under the Open Meetings Act. So I want to make sure Councilwoman Bacon-
Would you like a copy?
I'm trying to address the question of the council, please. And so to make sure that we comply with it, I think, I just want to understand, your request, your motion is to have the sewer subcommittee and the town council pass a motion tonight that says that they will hold a meeting, an open meeting, under the Open Meetings Act, of both bodies at the same time.
Yes, is that possible?
Well, the-
We do have the state legislators and the school-
You're, you're asking for the council to vote on it tonight, and that, that brings up a little bit of a conundrum, which is, it's not on the agenda that you're going to vote on it.
Just show up.
Show up.
Well, let me explain why that's a, that's a difficult decision to make, if you, if you don't-
If everyone could please let the solicitor address the audience on this question. There are concerns.
There's, there's a concern under the Open Meetings Act, which I have, which is that if they just show up and they don't notice it as a meeting, they're going to be very much constrained in how much, if any, they can reply, because the minute that they start to reply to any question, when they just show up, as you had suggested, that can create a violation of the Open Meetings Act on their part, because they're together as a quorum, they're discussing town business, and they didn't give notice. And so, the reason that the motion is made tonight is, I believe, what Councilwoman Bacon is trying to do is to make sure that we don't have that problem. Okay, so-
I'm getting forced to connect, I'm getting a notice.
The, 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 the point is that-
I mean, this, this request also, I mean, I put this request in a while ago, so that, you know, about a week ago, so this isn't so-
The council will do the meeting on Monday night, they can do a notice without voting on it tonight, but if they want to vote on it, I believe that, because all they're doing is scheduling town business, I don't think it's necessarily a violation of the Open Meetings Act tonight to vote on a scheduling matter for the town council, all right? Even though it's not on the agenda. So, the answer to your question is yes.
Okay.
My, my comment-
So the town council and sewer subcommittee can be at the meeting.
Your motion is proper, is what I'm saying, under the OMA.
Okay, I got it right. Thank you.
I'm sorry, it was Councilwoman Carlson's motion, my, my apology.
I seconded, and I also might ask that we attend this meeting last week, it was told we weren't invited.
So if you, if there's a motion on the floor with this-
Yeah, for discussion. My- My thought, and, and I talked to the manager, is that this would be an informational meeting, where the town manager, the finance director, would have, you know, be able to state the case, why certain city streets have been picked, not by random, by target, how the program has been going for forty years, where it is now, and it's not something where five council people sitting anywhere in that auditorium can add any more information. The information is from the town directors, the town engineer, the sewer subcommittee, I could answer questions, you know, hopefully they'll attend. As far as the council going, again, you've got the open meeting law question, it becomes a shouting match, unlike tonight. Now, not unlike tonight, not unlike tonight, and the information really won't get conveyed that way as best they can from the town. The town manager takes the information to the town council, of which, then, we can make a educated decision, to continue, to stop, or not. So personally, I, I gotta say that I already made the decision, two reasons all, that it's not a good idea to make it a political ballgame, and keep kicking the ball back and forth. I said to me, if, if I could speak, putting in sewers is not popular thing. It's not optional. When the town subcommittee brings it to the town council, and they approve it, it's a go.
So we don't have.
It's not sexy, and we could be sewer-free and pollute everything, or Tristant, Waller, Westwood. I don't have any. I think we're going, all right? The road is there. I, all down the noise.
Mr. President, it's, it's obvious that the people would like us there. I think the intention was not to have the council people there, so they could get direct questions, but obviously, they feel more comfortable having the council body there, and I'm comfortable with that, and, and I'm prepared to vote on that as well, too.
You're fine, man. John Barson.
We've got a motion, we've got a motion, second, and, and the comment time is over. Monday will be the meeting.
Are you refusing?
Am I being refused?
We're in the middle of a motion. We're in the middle of a motion.
Okay, make your motion.
It's already been made, I think you.
Hold on a second.
Okay, the board has settled.
Hold on. Mr. President.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and I'm a nay on.
You don't have to be there.
I don't have to be there. Okay.
You're fine, you're fine, nay. Before you.
No, it's not. We did not adjourn.
I'm asking for a motion to adjourn.
I'm like, Adam's feet. Don't talk.
A motion to adjourn?
No.
You, you, sir, with all due respect, you keep talking about pollution. I kind of went to school for chemistry, I understand a little bit about pollution, and there is aerobic and anaerobic activity that happens in the septic system, and the anaerobic activity will keep that pollution from happening, especially with all the ledge that you have in place. It's almost like a, I'll simplify it for you so you can understand. It's like having a fish, I'll use small words, it's like having a fish live and having the um.
Surely be a condescending, John. And I'm gonna stand in a horn, and stand in front of a suck, that's all. That's wrong.
Too bad. I apologize.
Thank you. I only for the record, for the record, bachelor's degree and a master's degree, not in biological sciences at all. Continue to talk.
In any case, just, just, just to let you know that that, that your comment is about, it's really tough for it to happen, especially when it passes through that much rock and ledge, that biologically and chemically, it's just not gonna happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, here is the forty-one first street. You said that what he's doing is wrong, what he's doing to us is wrong. I have three kids in college that I have to pay, and you want me to pay fifty thousand? You have to, you want me to pay fifty thousand dollars for a student? I don't want it. I just put in, no, let me, let me talk. I just put in youth services, and two thousand and fourteen, it cost me sixty thousand dollars, right? And now you want me to pay fifty thousand dollars for a student that I don't want, and I have to pay college, I have three college tuition for my three oldest kids, I don't wanna pay that. I don't pay you fifty thousand if you pay all my kids college. I cannot afford it, I cannot, do you want to say, I don't want it. I don't want it, you have the option, I should, you cannot force me, I should have the option to, to, to connect or not, I do not want to connect. I don't.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joel.
If, if people can bear with the speaker or the citizen that's trying to ask a question.
Actually, I don't even have a question, all right? I live on Helen Avenue, and this doesn't affect me yet, but I see that in the future it may, and I just wanted to make a comment about the behavior of the council tonight. You are extremely rude to the citizens.
Yes, yes.
So maybe you should consider that, that you want for us.
Thank you.
Yes, you're working.
John Schalbe, fourteen Cherry Drive. I had asked you to make a motion, it was brought up by the other councilwoman. Her motion was for all council people to be present. In your microphone, you said, I will not be there. But the president of the town council.
I thank you for your comment. And I, I, I understand what you're saying, and again.
All people, and motion passed.
Okay. Uh, all, a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? All in favor? Aye. All right. Lady Anne Jordan, good evening.
We're just going back around as a committee to talk about.